Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and free from sin.
So while we begin our council meeting this evening, I want to first take a minute to pause and remember what this day means for us. On September 11th, we watched in disbelief as acts of terror claimed the lives of thousands of people. Many still suffer from those lingering effects. Many died in those attacks, and those are still, and we have many who still continue to serve in the name of freedom and peace. And so with that in mind, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence. Thank you. May we never forget. Will the city recorder please call the roll?
Council President Steinheew.
Here.
Counselor Dijkstra.
Here.
Counselor Mann.
Here.
Counselor Salvage.
Here.
Counselor Olvers.
Here.
And Counselor Workman and Mayor Jokola are absent.
Thank you. For this time, I'd like to turn it over to Chief Stevenson.
Thank you, Madam President and City Council. Tonight, it's my honor and privilege really to be before you tonight to recognize two outstanding officers and their acts of bravery. At this time, I'd like to call up Officer John Trahan and Officer Travis Bosheart to stand up here with me. While they're walking up here, I'd like also to thank their family, their friends, loved ones, for all their support and love that they show them. If it wasn't for them and the support that they show, these two officers here are coming every day and putting their lives on the lines like all the other officers. If it wasn't for their support and true love, then, you know, it might be a different story. But today, I'm here to present these two officers with a citation, Medal of Valor. And I'll read to you tonight what these two officers did. "On the morning of August 22nd, 2024, at approximately 9:29 hours, Lebanon Police Officer John Trahan and Lebanon Police Officer Travis Bosheart were the first to respond to a structure fire at 290 Olive Street, Lebanon, Oregon. Officer John Trahan arrived on scene first and instantly saw that the single-family residence had thick black smoke pouring from the front of their side doors. A neighbor informed him that there was someone inside the residence yelling for help. As Officer Trahan approached the structure himself, he could also hear the cries for help. With no hesitation, Officer John Trahan entered the residence and was met with thick black smoke, making it very difficult for him to see and breathe. Officer Travis Bosheart arrived a short time after, and also with no hesitation, entered a short time after Officer Trahan. Officer Trahan could hear an individual inside the residence yelling for help, but could not see the person due to the heavy smoke. Because of the low visibility, Officer Trahan got on his hands and knees crawling until he located the subject inside. Officer Trahan stood up, grabbed a hold of the subject, and realized himself he was unsure on how to get out. It was about this time that Officer Travis Bosheart grabbed a hold of Officer Trahan and led him and the subject out to safety. The Medal of Valor may be awarded to a member of the Lebanon Police Department who acts on official capacity and distinguishes themselves by reacting to a situation in a positive and professional manner to reduce the risk of loss of life or injury to citizens of this community. On the morning of August 22nd, 2024, both Officer John Trahan and Officer Travis Bosheart put their own lives on the line as the situation demanded immediate action. Without their acts of courageousness and heroism, this Lebanon community member could have experienced a significant tragedy, including loss of life. For Officer Bosheart and Officer Trahan's dedication of service to law enforcement and commitment to the safety and security of the citizens of this community, I am very honored to hereby award each of them the Medal of Valor for their acts relating to this incident."
Did they smile? Just kidding. I want to also personally extend my gratitude for Officers Bosheart and Trahan. Your actions on a day that tested your strength, your bravery, your resilience, they exemplify truly the best of what it means to protect and serve. And I'm so thankful you are members of our community and part of our police force. So thank you. On behalf of council, thank you so much. Okay, moving on. Next we have up is the consent calendar. The following items are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be a separate discussion of these items unless the councilor so requests. In this case, the items will be removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. The agenda, board minutes, which include the library advisory committee, council minutes, a liquor license for amazing Thai cuisine, and approval to bid Link's parking lot paving. Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. We're going to pause now and let the room clear.
Yeah, she's used to spreading out over my side. Now she's got you guys.
She likes it when I push into her space.
Yeah, I know it.
She used to sit here, I used to mess with her.
That's my job now.
Giant phone. Not that big, it's a big case since I broke one twice in the last.
Was that cleared out the crowd?
Okay, next we have public comments. Citizens may address the council by filling out a testimony comment card prior to speaking and hand it to the city recorder. Each citizen is provided up to five minutes to provide comments to the council. The council may take an additional two minutes to ask clarifying questions. The city recorder will accept and distribute written comments at a speaker's request. First up, I have, I'm sorry if I say this incorrectly, Andrea Solman? Andrea Solman? I'm going to go with that. And after she speaks, we have Renee Hagan.
I feel like kind of a jerk because I'm talking about the police after all of this, so.
Can we make sure her mic is on? It's kind of counterintuitive, it needs to be red.
Am I good now? Okay.
Am I good now? Oh, yes. It's not as loud as it seems, I promise. Thank you.
Okay, so like I said, I feel like kind of a jerk because he just got awarded and all this stuff, and I'm kind of here to talk about things that haven't happened. How many things does it take? Say a person gets stopped in like a traffic stop or whatever, how many offenses does it take for a person to have to go to jail?
This is really your time to provide comments to us. And sometime we can direct those to staff to answer, but if you have concerns, this is kind of your time to bring it up, and we can talk perhaps afterwards.
I can't hear you now, I'm sorry.
Okay, sorry. This is really your time to bring comments and concerns to us, and not really a time that councilors are going to engage in back and forth, but please continue.
So I'm just going to kind of go through some stuff. So on December 14th, I was walking across the street, you know where 7-Eleven is, right? And I got ran over by a car, a truck, sorry. The guy had no license, he had a suspended license. The truck that he was driving wasn't in his name. He had no insurance. And on the police reports, it says that the thing that, the reason that he did it was because of the A-frame when he was turning. The A-frame, you know how the window, he couldn't see past that. There were no, there was no, I mean, he had no drug testing, he had nothing. He had, it just boggles my mind that this man ran me over and costs the county, the city, the state $300,000 because I was literally, I had to have screws put in my hips. Three screws, and my ankle was broken, and right now I have, I don't know if you guys know what it is called, enclosed deglament. Does anybody know what that is? No, I'm sorry. It's where, it's where the, like, on my hip, he ran over my hip, and it literally tore my skin away from my muscle. So now I have displaced fat, for lack of a better word, right here. It'll be there for a while. So I mean, that was just one thing. I mean, this happened nearly a year ago, and the guy never went to jail, he didn't have, didn't have to pay for anything, didn't, nothing happened to him. Just kind of wow. And the other thing is, I live in Queen Anne Apartments. I had to move into a bottom floor because of this accident. I had to move into a floor, into the bottom floor apartment because I couldn't go up and down the stairs anymore. I lived on the third floor apartment. About two weeks after I moved in, a woman named, well, I'm not going to say her name, a woman moved in, and it was chaos, there was violence, the police were called so many times. I have, you know, I did the address search, they were called so many times. I mean, literally, it sounded like she was, they were beating the crap out of each other. And when they would come, we quit calling anymore. I have six neighbors, five neighbors around me, we would call. I quit calling anymore because the police told me, oh, well, if they're not going to claim to be a victim, nobody can go to jail. Now there's two kids, like, they're 16 and 14, maybe 17 and 15 now, I don't know their ages, but they live in that apartment. There's, the mother is in jail, she's still in jail, has been in jail since July 30th. She's got it pending, she's got $30,000, and she, she's still pending, she apparently went and stole people's cars and brought them back to the apartment, and they picked her up. I mean, she's on the warrant, the guy that she had living with her, he was on a warrant, and these kids are living there. The one guy that did get the award right here, the older guy with the white hair, he actually came and he wanted to check on the kids. The day that he came, marijuana smoke was just pouring out of their apartment. What is going on with that? You know, I know, I'm not, you can't answer, but, I mean, you've got kids that are living there with no supervision. My, you know, I tried to go through, the apartment manager, the apartment is Queen Anne, and it's called Low Income Tax Income Credit, and they wouldn't, they won't do anything about it. In fact, they told me, they said to me, it seems like you're not a good fit, I think you should give your 30-day notice.
Well, you're, I just want to point out that this is flashing, which means the five minutes is up, but I do want to point out also that our police chief is here tonight, and I would really appreciate if you would connect with him on some of those questions and concerns you have. I mean, outside of that, I think I'm just going to refer this to staff.
So what do you, I mean, you have my phone here, what do you want me to do? I put it on the card.
I don't, I don't have access to your card, but I'm going to give you one of my cards, and we can talk on a phone call. But I'm going to address a couple things with you, just first and foremost. First, sympathize with the fact that you were hit, and.
I was hit, I was run over.
Yes, you were ran over. And what occurs in those is, we will come out, we will investigate those. If there's no crime that has been committed, there's no reason for us to take the individual to jail. Now, it does not mean that we did not issue the individual citations to appear in court for violations. And I'm quite confident, I don't know your case because I haven't read over it, and I don't really know for certain, but I'm quite confident that the officers that went out there investigated, saw that there was no criminal act, but did issue citations for the violations that occurred, such as no insurance, driving while suspended, and things of that nature. And that individual is cited to appear in court, and I don't know if you followed up with the court to see what is going on with that.
I was in, I was in the hospital for two days.
Sure, sure, but we can't arrest somebody for violations. We have to operate within the parameters of what the law allows us to do. So, but if there's more questions in regards to your case, I'll give you my card, and we can talk, I'll give you a call, you can call me, whatever have you. Give me a little bit of time to review and see what was involved with that, but just listening to what you had to say, those are all violations that occurred, so no crime occurred, so we can't take somebody to jail. Is that, do you understand that?
I understand that.
As much as we would love to, we can't. In regards to the disturbances at Queen Anne's, the officers are absolutely correct. If we go there and we do an investigation and we can't find what a crime, if there's no crime that has occurred, and no one's willing to say, I want this individual to go to jail, then unfortunately, we can only do what we can do, again, what's in the parameters of the law. We will go out there, and we will try to calm the situation down, perhaps remove one of the individuals. It sounds like we did arrest somebody, and we will arrest somebody when we can. When it comes to the children, we will investigate that, but that's, Department of Human Services is DHS Child Welfare that we contact, we're mandated reporters, so we contact them, make them aware of what the situation is. They can come in and do an investigation and ensure that the children there are safe. So, again, there's only so much that the law enforcement entity itself can do, and we do everything that's within our power to do to ensure that people are held accountable. But, all that to say, what I will do is I will give you my business card. You can call me, it has my office number on there, you can call me, leave me a message, I will get back to you. But give me a little bit of time to look and see what, A, I want to look at your being ran over, and B, I want to look at the disturbances that you're talking about. But please rest assured that we are doing everything that the law will allow us to do.
I'm just worried about the kids, because who's taking care of those kids?
You got to trust me when I say, so are we. We're very concerned about that, so. Let me give you my card.
Thank you. And thank you, Chief Stevenson. Okay, next up is Renee. Ward three, sorry, she was also ward three.
Good evening. My name is Renee Hagum. I live at 311 South Main Road. Jeremy Salvage, God bless his heart, I mean, Jeremy Salvage. I'm serious. This man responds when the police department won't. And that was a sad set of affairs. He came running over to see the encampment at the dog park, at the baseball field, Gillett Dog Park, the baseball field, we've had two games there this year. I've lived in that building across the street for four years, and we've had kids' baseball every single season. We've got the Pee Wees, we've got the junior high, we've got the high schoolers and so forth playing there. They played two games there this year because of the filth and the homeless, whatever they want to claim, that will not accept help, won't accept anything, they just want to sit there and do their drugs and camp out at the restrooms at the baseball field. You know, children go there, they have a slide there for kids, and a little jungle gym. They, the homeless pulled the picnic table that they had, pulled it right over to the public restrooms. Another time, just recently, in the past four or five weeks, they, we had called the police, it was 20 minutes to a half an hour, and I had to call them, well, no, I yelled at them. There were two cars parked there, a little white sedan, a red car, a small red car, four or five of them, one of them's up on the rooftop of the restrooms there at the park, ripping shingles off the roof. What the purpose of that was, I don't know, but they had strung wire up, and they have gone now, thanks to Jeremy Salvage, God bless his heart, because he came jogging over. He was sweating, and he was in his jogging shorts and so forth. Well, yeah.
I was on a run when he got the call.
I know you were, and God bless your little peaking heart, you know? You came running over there, but you only saw half of it. They had all kinds of blankets and sleeping bags and stuff stored up there. Now, this is a park for kids, and then there's Gillett, whatever they call it, the dog park, you know? And kids don't feel comfortable going there anymore. We only got two games, and I live in senior housing, okay? It's low income, but it doesn't mean we all have to be scumbags, you know? But we like to go out there and sit and watch the kids, you know, play baseball. And we got two games this year, and I asked some of the parents, I said, what's going on? How come, you know, I said, what's going on? There's just, each ballpark was being used at the time. They said, well, we're not going to be playing ball here anymore. I said, what? Why? You know, and they said, because there's too many homeless people, too much drug paraphernalia in around that area, and Deila, God bless her, you know, she tried to get those bushes that are right through the pathway, down the asphalt pathway, she tried to get those cut down, and nothing has been done. They don't need to be any higher than 30 feet. I think we spoke about that the day we talked there on the sidewalk, and I said, look, you can't even see that sign that says handicap only or whatever, you know? And it's just, when, you know, our police department's called, I know they're spread out, and I understand that, but believe me, when, not all senior citizens are crazy, you know? We're protecting our neighborhood, and it's time again, like I said about a year or more ago, we're going to take our neighborhood back at any cost. And if it costs somebody their stupidity, then that's what it costs them. We can get police response in a timely fashion, then we're going to take it upon ourselves. I don't go anywhere without a chaser. I have a bullhorn, but I didn't need it that night when they're on the roof. My voice carried across, and they did start jumping off the roof and leaving. Point is, they're ripping shingles off the roof of the restroom. Now, there are that many bored teenagers, why aren't they playing ball? Why aren't they doing this? You know, the parents of Lebanon are responsible, and the police can always, cannot always keep arresting their kid and having them, you know, say, oh, well, my life's over anyway, now I'm a criminal. It has to start at home, and I don't know how we get that word across, you know, to the parents. Schools can be responsible, it's just a really frustrating thing. Excuse my dry mouth, I've just had a lot of oral surgery. I don't know what to do, and I'm not trying to come down on, you know, the police department, but I called one time, and the dispatcher, especially at night, has a serious problem.
I'm sorry, ma'am, I'm going to interrupt you just because your time is up.
Okay. An Office for Police Accountability. I had to contact them when I lived in Washington State, and it worked. And as far as I know, we've never ever had one.
Renee, can I, can I ask, has the problem been resolved? It sounds like they're not hanging out there as much anymore.
Some of it, but I think, you know, just fruit for thought, Office of Police Accountability, when they do respond or don't respond or don't do the right thing, I had to do it in Seattle, when there were a bunch of syringes and stuff dumped in front of my mobile home. And I got response, you know, and they have to have accountability.
Well, I'll defend our police department. They're very busy, and they do have to prioritize calls, and I understand how frustrating that is. I saw it, and was frustrated by it also, but they have to, you know, they have to place a priority on their calls, so there's going to be more important things before they can come and take care of the homeless situation.
Anyway, I just wanted to give big kudos to Jeremy Salvage.
Well, thank you, thank you.
He's our guy.
Noted.
Thank you very much.
Put that in the minutes.
Put that, yes, put that in the minutes. Okay, thank you.
I think we just recorded it.
I don't know. Are there any more comments, comment cards? No? Going once, going twice, no more comments? Actually, there are two, I want to also point out, I'm sorry, I forgot about this. There are two letters submitted as public comments in our packets, please take a peek at those at your convenience if you have not already. We're going to move into the public hearing, which is North Gateway Urban Renewal Plan Amendment Correction. And the public hearing is now open at 6:28 PM. Will the Community Development Director present the staff report?
Yes, ma'am. So this is for the Urban Renewal Agency. This is a little bit of a cleanup item. Last year, the Urban Renewal Agency and the City Council approved a minor amendment for the North Gateway Urban Renewal Agency to add a land area, including portions of North Fifth Streets and the intersections of Tangent Street, and to amend the project list to include improvements to the intersection. A maximum of 1% of urban renewal area can be included into a minor amendment process. Anything more than that has to move to a major amendment process. And so we processed it as a minor amendment, we did the whole process, and then as we were doing some review of it, we identified that we were just a tiny little smidge over the 1% of land area that we could do. So this is a cleanup to modify the land area within that minor amendment from 1.44 acres to 1.3, 1.435 acres is really where we're at. And so the proposal tonight is to approve a resolution from the North Gateway Urban Renewal Agency to authorize this amendment. That is part of the project improvement is improvements of the intersection at Fifth and Tangent. What's in your.
Thanks. Does council have any questions of staff? I'll now open the floor for public comments. Is there anyone willing to speak that would like to speak in regards to this matter? matter? And the public hearing is now closed at 6:30 PM. All further discussion will be limited to council and staff at this time. Is there any council discussion? Any questions for Kelly?
It's crazy we even have to have this hearing for a .05 acre reduction, but here we are.
Correct.
And Trey's looking at me and we're actually flipping the hearings. We're supposed to do the ordinance for the city council first and then the resolution for the agency, I think, is what the agendas are supposed to be at.
Give me too much credit. Which one are we doing?
I opened it for the ordinance.
Opened it for the ordinance.
Okay, yeah, so.
Can we continue or do I gotta close and we gotta open again?
No, we can continue because they're both the same thing. So you opened it for the city council purposes, so same staff report, but instead of the action being in the agency, it's for the city council for an ordinance instead of the resolution. I concluded my staff report.
Thank you. Is there any questions for staff? I take that as a no. Will the city attorney please read the title of the ordinance?
Ordinance Bill Number 2024-8, An Ordinance Making Certain Determinations and Findings Relating to and Amending Ordinance Bill Number 2023-07. Ordinance Number 3002, Approving the North Gateway Urban Renewal Plan Amendment to Add Property.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. So we will adjourn as the Lebanon City Council and reconvene as the Lebanon Urban Renewal Agency. The public hearing is now open at 6:32 PM. Will the Community Development Director please present the staff report?
Okay, I'm caught up on my own things. Same staff report, same process, same thing, Urban Renewal Agency amending the 0.05 acres. And the action is to approve a resolution to modify that acreage to maintain it as a minor amendment. I'm available to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff? I'll now open the floor for public comments. Is there anyone willing to, or who would like to speak in regards to this matter? Seeing none, the public hearing is hereby closed at 6:32 PM. All further discussion will be limited to the agency and staff at this time. Is there any council discussion? I'm going to echo your comments.
Nope.
Dot the i, cross the t.
Okay. Will the city attorney please read the title of the resolution?
Resolution Number 2024-23, A Resolution of the Lebanon Urban Renewal Agency Amending Resolution Number 2023-02, Authorizing a Council-approved Amendment to the North Gateway Urban Renewal District's Boundary.
Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. We will adjourn as the Lebanon Urban Renewal Agency and reconvene as the Lebanon City Council, where I feel much more comfortable. Okay. Onto the nonprofit affordable housing tax exemption piece on our agenda with Crossroads.
Yeah, I need to interject. Since I'm the founder and chairman of the board for Crossroads, which is bringing this forward, it would be absolutely appropriate for me to shut up, not be involved in this discussion whatsoever and let you guys have at it. I, I don't want there to be any conflicts or bias or anything else involved.
Okay, thank you for indicating that for the record. Kelly, can you please provide us with a staff report?
Yeah. Good evening again. So before you tonight is a reintroduction of this conversation that started with council earlier this year regarding a request to authorize a nonprofit housing tax exemption program. The city council had a discussion on this topic and we were in the midst of budget season. And so it was requested that the conversation be tabled until after budget season so that we had a better understanding of the, of the city's fiscal conditions. We're bringing this forward to you tonight to allow council time to deliberate and identify if there's any additional information that you need to make a determination. And then if direction is provided to move forward, it'll give staff time to be able to put together any necessary ordinances and bring it forward for adoption in time to allow for any organizations to file the necessary paperwork before the March 1st deadline for the county to meet the tax exemption filing requirements for the, the next year. So the staff report that was provided in the agenda packets is pretty identical to the report that was provided earlier. It includes examples of the different types of tax abatement programs that are currently available throughout Lynn County and that are available in the city. We currently have 11 properties in the city that provide affordable housing and maintain some level of property tax abatement through these programs. And some of them maintain complete tax abatements. Through implementation of the nonprofit tax abatement program, that would result in complete tax abatement of the properties that, that utilize the program. Currently, there are three properties that would be eligible for use of the program. One of them that would be eligible already uses a different abatement through, that is currently available, that already has full tax abatement, so it's same same. And so really, currently there's two that would result being eligible for this program. That would equate to about $12,000 of an impact to the city's general fund currently. That being said, there's always the option and potential of additional properties being impacted in the future that would utilize this program. Again, as noted in the staff reports, in terms of frequency of use of this type of program, the only other city that we know of in the county that has this program currently is Albany. They've had it on the books for over 30 years at this point and eight properties in 30 years have utilized this tax abatement. And talking to Lynn County, they've identified that it is not a widely used tax abatement program. It is available and on the books, but it's not widely used in comparison to a lot of the other options that are available. And then finally, as noted in the report, if council does choose to move forward with this option, it does count towards partial implementation of action items listed within the housing production strategy as incentives to help with bolstering affordable housing options within the city. So that's a general summary of the report. I'm available to answer any questions and at this point, any council direction on how you would like to move forward with this item would be great.
Great. Questions from council?
Yeah, can you help me understand the difference between like this application to a nonprofit differentiated from like Section 8 housing or the federal HUD-style housing discount, tax discounts?
So this program is provided to a nonprofit organization that owns the property and, and maintains it for housing of affordable housing purposes. Section 8 vouchers are run as HUD voucher programs where those vouchers are held by the, the residents and are basically vouchers that can go to different properties that are not necessarily restricted as affordable units or affordable properties. And those Section 8 vouchers help fill the gap of the residential.
Yeah, but I understand that part, but if you're, if you, if I own an apartment building that's providing Section 8 housing.
Yes.
Aren't I eligible for a big property tax break also?
You are, but you don't have to be a nonprofit organization to be eligible for that. And not all organizations are Section 8 housing eligible. I am not an expert on this. We do have people in the audience from a nonprofit organization that can speak to this on a greater extent than I can. But there are different types of affordable housing developments. They are different funding buckets. And this is nonprofit organizations operate under different types of funding buckets. And so this is just an additional tool, basically.
Would it be okay to have someone, I'd be asking KJ questions, but I, I can't.
Can't.
Is there, is there someone here that could provide kind of like more?
Can we, yes, let's call Michael Couch up from Crossroads Community to provide us with some context. Since the mayor's not here, I can make that decision as council president, right?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Good evening, council. Thank you for having me. In relation to your question regarding funding, when you're dealing with affordable housing, there are three different components for funding. The first is being able to secure the site, the second's being able to run the site, there's being able to cover additional expenses. In general, HUD handles the first portion, being able to assist with the construction or the, the, the purchasing of the site. The funding that we received to be able to purchase a site in question that we're looking for the exception on was provided to us as pass-through funds from Oregon Housing, from Oregon Health Authority, specifically for the focus of being able to house individuals with severe and persistent mental illness, to be able to provide them a safe and monitored place to be able to sleep in a home of their own so they don't end up on the street. So in that regard, we're helping to house folks who have a distinct need. We provide a distinct service and it is affordable for them, but not all that affordable for us. So where we're coming in is we're requesting a consideration for the fact that we're providing services to residents of Lebanon that we serve, as well as also making the job easier for, for the police department, for Lynn County Mental Health, to be able to monitor and provide services to keep these folks stable, which we do gladly and freely. We don't receive any money currently from the city for these services. And we are looking to see if there's a way that we can help our money go farther by providing us some additional savings. I do realize that will result in, and result a cost to the city for reduced tax incentives. I believe that the good that we're able to accomplish on a dollar per dollar basis would outweigh that cost.
Can you, can you give me example like specifically how this affects Crossroads? Like?
Certainly. So if we take a look at the cost of having a staff member on site, we have a staff member that lives there, so she lives on site, so she's able 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. And the pay that she receives as a salaried employee, if we are able to not concern ourselves with paying that property taxes, that covers about half of her position. Now, a nonprofit that does not sell services, that does not have clients with which we can decide to raise prices, or that we can decide to, to modify our services and charge a different amount, we have fixed incomes which are relates to, relates to grants we're able to qualify for and some minor fee for services we're able to use with, with certain program partners for offering certain services. We are not able to suddenly decide to raise prices or make more money. Everything for us is deciding to, to how we can save, how we can reduce our expenses so that more of our, more of the money that we do receive via grants and funding can go towards the end result of helping those in need.
Yeah, that makes sense. So right now, you guys are paying full property taxes?
Correct.
And, and this, this would eliminate just the city property taxes, or would you also, would you not have to pay county?
It'd be, it'd full, I believe the ordinance would state that'd be a full elimination of property taxes. We don't make money off of it. We're looking to save money so we can reinvest that into our programs.
Okay. I wasn't sure if this just applied to the income the city was bringing in from the property taxes paid to the county, or if it's all, if we pass this, the county doesn't, also doesn't get money.
We don't have an, we don't have an ordinance in front of us today, so this is just deciding if this is something we want to go forward with, am I correct? And we could.
Correct.
Correct.
And we would have to do some research into what the county would accept and what other organ, other cities have done to make sure it's compliant with ORS. And basically just follow the letter of the law and whatever they accept, they accept.
Okay. Well, does anyone else have any questions? Because I have some more for you, I think.
And just to, to point out, like, the, the services that Michael was pointing out that, that Crossroads would be providing, that is a niche of services that is funded under a specific fund, that's not funded as Section 8 housing, right? Section 8 housing is traditional affordable housing.
Yep.
So that's a different bucket of funding. So that, that's not Section 8 housing, so that wouldn't fall under the tax exemption that Section 8 provides. So they, they're not eligible under that. They're providing a different service for a different level of affordability, for a different type of residential need. And there's different types of funding, other, and there's different types of other housing needs outside of that as well, right? So that's where this is, like I said, just another tool in toolbox. And in the staff report, it provided, I think, eight or nine different types of other tax exempted examples for senior housing or physical impairment, that kind of thing, that, that are those different types of buckets as well.
Would this only be for Crossroads or would this be all nonprofits?
Counselor, can you speak in the microphone so we can capture it for everybody?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Is this going to be for just Crossroads or for everyone?
No, sir, we don't make, yeah, we don't make ordinances for a single entity. It would be for all nonprofits.
So any nonprofit operating in Lebanon that's providing housing is exempt, would be exempt from property taxes?
If they apply for the program, yes.
However, we could write it when we receive a draft ordinance that if someone is, if an entity is already qualified for one, you know, like another tax exemption program or benefiting from that, I mean, you can't double, double down, obviously.
So multiple program, there are multiple types of tax exemptions and there are ways that you can double dip, where some of them are, you get partial exemptions and then if you meet a different qualification, you can get a full exemption. And that is, there, there are ways to do that and, and that is an acceptable form if you provide multiple layers of, of different services to, to meet those requirements under ORS and if those programs provide those opportunities, we can, I, I don't know enough about how the, the ordinance is set up because I haven't done that research to be able to tell you what other cities have done and what the ordinance would look like to tell you what it would do. But if there's concerns about that, we can bring it forward, that drafted.
Okay.
I, I think the, the question before you tonight is whether or not the potential fiscal impact and the program itself is something that you guys want to pursue and then we'll do the research of how the ordinance would look and get it approved through considerations of the county and legal and bring it forward for you guys for consideration.
I would like to move forward with it. I'd like to see what it looks like moving forward with it, the information and everything. I think what Crossroads does for the community is actually pretty, pretty good. I would not mind giving them a tax exemption or any other nonprofit that wants to come in and do the exact same thing.
Yeah, I, I also appreciate what Crossroads is doing and I think that particular case, they are providing a service to the community that is kind of taking the burden off some of our other areas in the city. So I think it, I'm in support of providing tax exemption to nonprofits like Crossroads. I just want to be careful how we draft it up that like a nonprofit that provides shoelace to, shoelaces to homeless people isn't getting a tax exemption on their office building downtown or something like that.
It is specific for providing housing. It is not general services of nonprofits. It, it is tied to your, your housing people.
We could set a threshold for what that is in an ordinance later on, right? Like, I mean, if someone's providing like a triplex or something, that's not on the same level as I guess what I'm, what I, what Crossroads provides for the community. Does that make, does that question make sense?
Yes.
Okay. You see my concern, I guess? I want to make sure that the exemptions are available for, for the nonprofits, similar to what Counselor Salvage said, that are doing the work in the city and not just for a private, well, I mean, it would be a private nonprofit that is doing it on a much smaller scale. I guess scale is a question too, but.
I, I understand the, the concern. I think, I guess the question, laying devil's advocate, providing three units of affordable housing is still three units of affordable housing. So what would be?
Sure.
I, I guess what would be the cause to not do it?
I guess that's a good point. It would be a lot slower.
It would be a lot slower, but it would still be incremental.
Most, most landlords that own, own the land that are providing affordable housing are using other, they're getting other tax breaks. This is, this is, seems like a special circumstance that it, they're in this niche market of nonprofit that doesn't qualify for these other property tax reductions that are out there.
Anecdotally, like I said, based off of conversations with the county, this particular tax exemption that we're talking about is very rarely used. tax exemption that we're talking about is very rarely used. Like I said, in the 30 years that it's been on the books with Albany, it's been used eight times, right?
Yeah.
So it's not like this is something that we're talking about using. And, and like I said, of the three that we have available currently that would be eligible, one is already eligible under a completely different option, and they're using that different option, because that was an easier path for them to move forward with, right? And so there, there are other options that they're moving forward with. This is just one that is an option that maybe is not current, they, some of these nonprofits don't currently have available to them for other options, and so this is one that can become available.
My suggestion would be, Kelly can do the research and bring back an ordinance for us to see.
It sounds like that's the consensus of the council, so Kelly, if there are more, ever there are any more questions from counselors, then please go ahead and move forward and draft an ordinance for us for later review.
I'll work with Trey.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to the next piece of our agenda, which is town hall meetings. Interim city man, interim, why, are we still interim?
Yeah, we're still.
Okay.
That's okay. Thank you, Madam Council President and counselors. So I thought we should have a little more discussion about the town hall meetings, the upcoming town hall meetings, just to kind of give you an idea of what we're looking at and what, kind of what we've put together so far. This postcard here, this card that you have before you, will go out next week to everybody in, in the city, within the city limits. So we drafted this, this goes out, I believe we're putting it out on the 19th, Brandon, is that correct? So every citizen will receive that. We will put out the town hall on our website, social media blast, and letting folks know, and that is on October 10th and the 15th. So that will happen. You also have before you, which we showed last time, basically an informational page and some frequently asked questions. I got to say that we're still working on frequently asked questions. We've asked our director team to brainstorm a little bit and think about what are the questions that might come up from citizens so that we have answers to those questions for the town hall meeting. This will also go on our website, which will be live as soon as we send out the mailer, so sometime next week, we'll make that webpage live. And that has our, oh, I believe it has our work sessions on it, it has this flyer and some other informational items on where we're headed with the city services fee. So a couple other things to go over. I also put just a brief outline of what we're gonna put together as far as a town hall PowerPoint. Brandon and I will give a PowerPoint. It will be somewhat abbreviated from what we've given you. We'll, we'll simplify that a little bit and make it a little bit easier so that folks can see that, but we'll go through that process. One of the questions I had, was there anything specific that you wanted to see in the PowerPoint that, that you really want to convey? Just the, the information that we've got and in a, in a format that we can communicate it? Counselor Salvage? Okay.
You gave us a lot of information in our, in our discussions on this, and I guess the same information we had, the public should have available.
We will do that. Those PowerPoints will also be up on our website, but we'll, we'll abbreviate this a little bit and not get into the, probably the technical piece. I mean, we're prepared to answer the questions on the technical piece, but I think we might get lost in some of that, so. So we'll go ahead and continue to do that, work through those things if there's no, nothing else. And we've got time, right? So if somebody thinks it's something that they really, oh, hey, make sure that's in there, why, let us know. We're proposing probably that the city council, once the PowerPoint's done and the question and answer session, that counselors would be available to answer those questions as they come up, as citizens come up with those questions. And I think really that's the big thing, other, and making sure that you guys are comfortable with where we're headed with this, and is there anything else you need from staff in terms of, of?
You had mentioned earlier about sitting down with us ahead of time, at like two at a time, and kind of going over stuff?
Uh, yeah, we could, we could, we could talk about that.
Yeah, I'd like to have a chance to preview what is going to be going out at the, the meetings, so you can better formulate answers or identify areas where you may have more questions.
Sure, sure, absolutely. We can, we can put something together. I, I think as we get the frequently asked questions, you know, a few more of them on here, I think that'd be beneficial. This will be held at the library, just so everybody's aware. We're hoping that we don't undershoot that in terms of capacity. If that does, then we'll, we'll move over to the senior center on the next night, and we'll, we'll see how big it is and see what kind of turnout we get with that. And the 10th and the 15th is, I know, Counselor Dijkstra, are you available on the 10th and the 15th? He's gonna, he's gonna pull out his calendar.
Have we had a response from counselors that they will be there? Okay.
Assume the format will, it'll kind of be us in front, staff gives a presentation, community's there to answer questions afterward, ask questions afterward.
Yeah, so that, that's the idea. It would be sitting across the front with the community out in front of you. We'd give a presentation, a PowerPoint presentation. We'd have a podium for folks to come up and ask those questions of you. And keep in mind, as a backstop, Brandon and I have lived this for a year, so anything that we get stumped on, we'll, we'll help with that, obviously, you know, any technical aspects of that.
We're gonna direct those by ward, or is that?
We can do that one of two ways. We can, on the comment card, we could have a map, and people could list the ward that they're in. That'd kind of be up to our quote-unquote moderator to do that and see how that works out.
The answer's yes, I'm feeling for both of them.
All right, perfect. I've got you penciled in.
Locked in.
I'll have the PowerPoint ready for you to give.
Oh, yeah, right.
So yeah, I mean, you're, you're gonna have an opportunity to, we could do it by ward, what, what's, what's council's preference?
Well, we've got three wards and two dates.
Yep.
How you gonna divide that?
We'll be at both, counselors will be at both of those sessions.
It'll be citywide.
Four-meeting month, October is.
Yes.
You're gonna earn that pay you're not getting.
Yeah, right.
So would you prefer by ward? Or would you?
Not sure, Alice, I mean, how would, if, if someone came up, how would you direct, how would they direct, who would they direct their question to, or how would we pick, other than ward, how would we pick how to answer it?
Yeah, I mean, that'd just, it, it'd kind of be a little bit, that's where the moderator comes in and says, which counselor would like to take this question? You could do it that way? You could do it by ward, if that's easier? I'm open either way.
I, I think there's some questions I might be able to answer better than others, so maybe we, maybe we kind of keep it open and the moderator can direct, you know, who wants, I do like the idea, who wants to take that, because KJ might have a better answer, like he feels really strongly about, he wants to answer that question. And I could even follow him up if I feel strongly about it, but there might be another one where Carl wants to say something, I don't really have anything to, I don't really have a great answer for it, and he can take the four.
Okay. Yeah, and we'll just leave it at that and leave it, leave it open.
Makes sense.
Anything else that you want to see, or, okay. Well, we will be prepared for that. We'll have one more council meeting right before that, should anything else come up, but these are going out next week, so we are, we're hitting the street with them.
One question about these, the QR code on the back?
Yes.
Is that gonna link to the website?
Yes.
Okay.
It's not live now, but once, once, once these go out, then it will link to the website.
Sounds good.
Julie tells me in theory, right? It'll work. Okay, with that, I, I don't have any more on that unless there's any other questions.
Did I hear you say four dates or two dates?
There's four meetings in October, so we've got the first council meeting, two town hall meetings, and then a, a second council meeting in, at the end of the month, so we're gonna keep you guys busy this, in October.
You're gonna earn that money you're not making.
That's right.
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. There are no other questions on that? We'll move to department reports. City manager.
Thank you again. So a couple of things to point out. Yesterday, we had our strategic action plan focus groups. We had good, good attendance, we had good, good feedback from the people that attended, staff that attended. There was a lot of good engagement, so I was really pleased at how that went. We hit all the five areas that we did, which was community safety, infrastructure, cultural, what was the other two? Drawn a blank. Kelly and I sat in meetings for nine hours yesterday. Yes, fiscal responsibility would be the big one, and?
Communications and engagements.
Yes, and communications, yes. So that went really well. We had 54 individuals within the organization fill out the survey that we sent out, so although we would have liked to have had more, we thought 54 was pretty good, so that's, that's moving on down the line, and we should be getting the results of yesterday compiled and sent to us here pretty soon. We had the 9/11 flag ceremony this morning. Want to say a big thanks to everybody that put that on, police department, fire department, Counselor Steinhabel for moderating that, and I think Deila does a lot of that work, am I correct? Okay, so.
She does, yeah.
A big shout out to Deila for, for all the work that she does there on that. A couple other things, I believe, excuse me, the chief is gonna do a Measure 110 update in October, maybe? If, if we know, if we, if we've got everything squared away? Okay. And then last legislative days at the end of this month, myself, Kelly Hart, and I don't know if Brandon and Jason, I, Jason and the mayor will be at legislative days. We've got our lobbyist looking for 20s?
27 meetings.
20s, trying to set up 27 meetings, but it's not whether we get that many, I think if we get a third of those, that'd be great, but, so that, that effort is continuing, and we're gonna get our face out in front of them and testify on committees in hopes of maybe making some change. So with that, I can answer any questions that you have on anything else here.
Any questions? All right. Items from council? The items from council? Moving on, public press comments. Any comments from the public or the press? Hello? Take that as a no. All right, next scheduled council meeting is October 9th, city council, 6:00 PM here. See you there, 7:03. Let's go ahead and adjourn.